And I believe that's everybody.
Okay, thank you, Eleanor. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission is holding this virtual public hearing this evening on October 2nd, 2024, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land-containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by a regular meeting, and in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff at cc@Boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Park, our Chair of the Commission. Could staff present please identify themselves?
Eleanor Ettemerri with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Olivia Hussein with the Environmental Department.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll call the role of commissioners who are present. Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Condon?
Conan Druvengadum.
Commissioner Herbst?
Ian Herbst.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061772 and Boston File Number 2021-010 from Deculus and Company LLC on behalf of Stephco Holdings Company for the proposed demolition of an existing structure and construction of eight housing structures located at 90 Allendale Street in West Roxbury. The resource areas are 100-foot buffer to inland bank waterfront area and riverfront area. This hearing was continued or has been continued from the September 18th, 2024 hearing. Okay, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jim Deculos here, representing Stephco, and with me this evening is John Rockwood, Attorney Chip Nylan, Attorney John Pulgeni, Landscape Architect Katia Patsiadlo, and the applicant Stefanos of Stratu Dakis.
Fantastic, thank you. And Eleanor, I think we have, this project has undergone a peer review. I think we have the peer reviewer with us this evening?
We do. We have folks from STV as well.
Okay, great. I know that we had some questions for STV. So I'm just trying to figure out what the most efficient way to do this is. Why don't we, why don't we ask STV the questions that we have for them first? So who's here with STV?
This is Dustin Kirksek, STV.
Priti Sriwad at STV.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so thank you for all the work you've done. Lot of information in the file. This is one of the largest files I think we've ever reviewed. And so I'm going to start off with everything that's been flying around. I'm going to try to, for my own satisfaction, simplify this. So Dustin and Priti, in your opinion now, after all the consultations you've had with the proponent, does this project meet our performance standards and regulations?
I think how I might take on that one, Commissioner Parker. Good evening, everyone. STV has reviewed the documents. We understand that the waterfront area is the most impactful area for the commission. But again, certain mitigations that commissioners are requesting can be done. We think it meets the ordinances as well as Wetland Protection Act from our perspective.
Okay, thank you. What I'll do now is I'll go to Commissioner Herbst, because I know that she has some more specific questions for you. So Commissioner Herbst?
Okay, thank you. I see all the work that's been done, and it seems very clear, particularly in terms of infiltration of stormwater, you know, that it's met the requirements. I think the thing that I was looking at, what we had asked of you, including determine how the proposed stormwater system will change downstream hydrology, and will subsequent surface discharge be substantially the same as pre-development to avoid impact? So I think there's been a lot of focus on not sending too much water down, but it's also my understanding that the system is sensitive to change generally, and I just would like you to speak to that as you can about how you, how or if you expect the hydrology will change, or will there be more groundwater now than surface water? Does that, how much does that matter if that's true? If you could speak to those issues about your comfort with the desire to have the hydrology be relatively the same when the project is completed.
Absolutely, Commissioner Herbst. I can provide our thought process when reviewing the application. We did consider Urban Wild's comment regarding the flow regime through the area during our review process. So we did a desktop review of the USGS map, the Mass Mapper, which is the Massachusetts GIs data, and few other resources, basically to understand the general lay of the land, and we knew that this is a complex wetland system starting like north of Allendale Street, which is about 1,300 feet upstream. There's a wetland there, and then an HSP-certified Vernal Pool to the south, that is also about 1,000 feet downstream, and that all finally drains to Bussy Brook. So I am by no means a Vernal Pool specialist, but I looked at the hydrology and do understand the hydrology regime and understand that it is important for the Vernal Pool since these Vernal Pools fill in during spring and again dry up in summer. So I approached it from a water balance or the budget perspective, like you said, you know, surface water, groundwater, evapotranspiration. So half of the site today runoff is now captured and infiltrated through those infiltration basin, which is great for the groundwater, and there is, and the other half, the other surface runoff goes through the culvert downstream, and it just maintains as it flows today. So for Vernal Pools, you know, like you said, similar to surface water, groundwater is of, it's an equally significant water resource, and since from our desktop review, since everything kind of ultimately flows to that one low point, and I think the low point is at that Vernal Pool, and then there is Center Street, and then it goes down from there to the Bussy Creek. So ultimately, it flows down to that one point, and our conclusion is that it did not alter the contributing watershed or hydrology significantly. So again, some of those impacts in the future, climate change is something different. Extended periods of drought could again impact those Vernal Pools, but that is not in control of this project. So again, reviewing some of those journals on Vernal Pools, basically, the quality of the water is also important. So we kind of looked at it from that perspective as well. We kind of thought that the project is improving the water quality mainly by infiltrating and also by the water quality structure, and we had a comment to better the water quality system, and I think that was addressed. So overall, we feel that, you know, the hydrology of the system is not significantly impacted. So that was our review process, and I just wanted to give you a background of that.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. That really was my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson, any questions for STV?
No, sorry. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
I don't have any either. Thank you, Chief Parker.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, I think we should discuss the order of conditions and the conservation restriction issue. We've passed back and forth drafts regarding the placement of a conservation restriction on the property, the 40,000 square feet, and I believe the southern portion of the property. We had talked about the appropriateness of a deed restriction versus a conservation restriction. The special condition that we have now regarding this issue, and I should step back and say that Commissioner Sullivan has been very involved in this and took the night off because of his wedding anniversary, which, you know, is just, I guess he deserves it. But he gave me a call today and said that he was, he was fine with a deed restriction and also was fine with the project as it is currently shaped. He felt that there was a lot of progress that had been made, so he was satisfied with where we are today. But the special condition itself at this point reads something like the applicant will make diligent and good faith efforts to place a conservation restriction on the property, and if that is not feasible due to regulation or lack of state approval, then we'll fall back on the land restriction. And the reason we put that in there is we had a discussion, it might have been two hearings ago, regarding with Attorney Nylan for your team, Jim, and he had expressed reservations that a conservation restriction would get approved by EEA. So we're approaching this with sort of a bootstrap suspenders approach here. The other conditions that are in here are pretty much whenever we have this sort of restriction or, you know, rules that we're concerned about for condominiums, we want to see that in the master deed, in the chain of title. And importantly for me, in the special condition, we explicitly say that the commission may enforce any violations of the conservation restriction or deed restriction, as it may be, including any failure to record or re-record, as the case would be for a deed restriction. So I think we're in a good place there. The other thing I would note, why I'm, I guess I would say I'm agnostic as to what restriction gets put on the property, whether it's in the form of a conservation restriction or deed restriction, is that the, you know, if, as long as it's in the chain of title, if there was something that came up in the future where a condominium association did not re-record, the deed restriction, clearly that would get picked up when anybody tried to sell or finance their units, and a lender would want to see that situation rectified before lending any money on the property. So with the with the special condition that we have and all the other forces that are in place, being in the master deed, in the chain of title, for the public record, if we do have to fall back on the deed restriction, I think that it would, it would accomplish everything that we want to accomplish in the conservation restriction. One thing I will say about the the edits that you made to these provisions, I have a couple of very minor nits that I'd like to put in there. At one point, we define applicants' good faith efforts. I'd like to include good faith and diligent efforts to make sure that, it's just something I always add when I put in good faith, to make sure that efforts are continuing. And I think that was it. Everything else, Chip, I think what you put in there made perfect sense and cleaned it up. Oh, the other thing I did was I just flipped Conditions 119 and 120. 119 had to go in front of 120, because that's where we first talk about the introduction of the conservation restriction. And then I think there was something else, and Eleanor, I think this might have been your comment, I believe it's special, no, general condition, 115 regarding the mowing. Did you want to take that on? I saw, sorry to edit here. Jim, you made this comment. So Eleanor, did you get a chance to review that?
I did, yes. So I'm sorry, you were asking about 115 specifically?
Yeah, the any required annual mowing shall be mulched and the grass clipping shall be collected.
Yes. No, I think that that works. One of the sort of outstanding questions that I think staff had tonight about this was getting a little bit more detail about exactly what the requirements are going to be that the commission wants to see for the, for what the mown requirements will be, where the sort of mode strip will be, which I believe this was a question that Commissioner Herbst had brought up as well. And so those were things that we wanted to clarify and could then maybe attach to Condition number 115. And then I think the only other edit that I had or response to the edits that we received was that for number 77, which is the condition about no vehicles crossing wetland resource areas, I would just say that we would probably want to say regulated under the Act as well as the ordinance, and not just strictly the Act.
Okay, makes sense. And you jogged my memory. Also in, I think it's Condition 119, when we first introduced the idea of the conservation restriction, I would suggest that we introduce the plan, which I think is Sheet 5, contained in an NOI, that I am not sure the date of that particular NOI, but that is
Yes, it was, sorry, it was January 20th, 2021.
Okay, so if we can identify the plan that shows or depicts the area of the property, area of the land to be restricted, I think that would be good, because we have so many documents. I think we want to call it out as opposed to have someone search for that plan in the, because again, the big record that we have here, so.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So engineers, we like to put a date on the lower right-hand corner, but we have revision labels on the upper right-hand corner. And so you may want to say January 21st, 21, but as revised on September 17th, 24. That's the fifth revision to this sheet in the upper right-hand corner.
Thank you, Jim. Apologies for missing that.
Yeah, fantastic. Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, so now, Eleanor, anything else for you?
Apologies, I keep unmuting myself. I would, yeah, I would just ask that we maybe discuss the the parameters around the mode area, exactly where the commission wants to see the strip, and what the sort of annual requirements might be for the mode area.
Okay, I haven't given that a lot of thought. Commissioner Herbst, have you?
Sorry, muted. I don't have the specifics. I more flagged that I thought we should have them. I think there are a few little things. One is really what's the width of that, and I think there was a wanting to specify that, you know, the annual mowing is done in the spring. And I wanted to understand, given that there's going to be a mode area across the stream, what kind of equipment they're thinking about, or what we should allow. One way to handle this, which, to answer your question, Eleanor, but we could figure it out, would be to say that those final things have to be approved by commission staff. But I would be interested to hear from the applicant how they're going to mow, what kind of equipment is going to go across the stream, and how it's going to get there to maintain that area.
Katia, do you want to weigh in on that?
Sure. Because there are currently existing mown lawn areas all adjacent to the stream and multiple crossings that are mown on currently in the restoration of the area to native species. I had envisioned that people could walk, you know, continue to walk across, and that that one mow oval space on the opposite side, the south side of our site, could be mown more frequently than the rest of the low-mow meadow, which would be only mown once per year in the spring if preferred. And that mower is, a mower, a regular, I don't know how wide they typically are, three feet, let's say, could be pushed over and then used regularly to mow that one area, and used regularly to mow the strip that has been requested at the edge of the 50-foot boundary on a regular basis to continue, maintain that and identify the edge consistently.
Understood. So not, I'm not, not a ride or mower, you know, some kind of
I don't think so. These are such small areas. I don't think, I don't know how wide the largest push mower could possibly be. I don't think we want to limit ourselves to a certain very narrow one, but something that a normal maintenance company would come and roll off a truck and then push around, but not a ride-on tractor mower kind of thing, no.
That's, that's my only concern.
The once-a-year annual mow of the meadow may want to be something a little bit larger, more like a ride-on because of the size of the space that would require that once a year mowing, more of like a, something that's a little bit more sturdy than a push mower.
So anyway, those, these are just the kind of last little things that I was thinking about that I think we should just give staff the ability to sign off on in the landscape plan, to approve or not.
Okay, great. Anything else?
I think that also includes the signage that's going to be placed at the various restriction areas.
Okay, and so the mowing would be included in the landscaping plan, so staff would sign off on that. As far as signage, do we need a condition that signage will be approved by staff? Eleanor, do you know if we have something in there, or?
We can add that, yeah. So we can, we can add an additional, so we already have the staff approval of the landscaping plan, and then we can specify the mowing details, and then also approval of the signage and its wording.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Wilson, any questions for the proponent? Any comments?
No, appreciate all the iteration. As was said, this is a better project now than we began with just working with the city on this.
Great. I just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six, unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff at cc@Boston.gov. Okay, Commissioner Condon, I remember at one of our very first meetings, you asked about a meadow. You have your meadow. What other questions or comments do you have here?
I do appreciate the meadow and the landscaping plan. The only question I had, maybe you can help me understand this. A deed restriction in place of a conservation restriction, is this implicitly in perpetuity, or does something have to be done explicitly?
Yeah, probably the biggest difference between the two land use restrictions is that requirement that, well, a conservation restriction, you get it approved, you record it, and it sits there in perpetuity. It requires no housekeeping, except for amendments and things of that nature, right? The deed restriction is something that's limited by Massachusetts statute to having a 30-year duration. And at the end of 30 years, you need to re-record it, and then in in 20-year periods after that. So it needs to be recorded, you know, once a generation. And so that was one of the concerns that we heard regarding the, you know, the differences in the two, in the two mechanisms to restrict uses on the property. So what we have in the special conditions, the other thing that was, at least to me, a pretty big deal was a court case that I was involved in probably five or six years ago now, where it had a similar sort of restriction between the developer of a condominium and the association. And the association did not take care of a certain portion of the Harbor Walk, I think it was. And what happened is in the Enforcement Act or litigation that ensued, the, it was the Appeals Court, I believe, said that the the only parties who could enforce the restriction or the obligation to maintain, in this case, the Harbor Walk, would have been the grantor, being the developer or the sponsor of the condominium, or anyone in the condominium association. So without explicit language that we now have in our special conditions, the enforceability was an issue, and I think, and again, the deed restriction is only a fallback, so we have something in the event that a conservation restriction is not approved by the Office of Energy, Environment and Energy. And EEA is the acronym for the agency that approves these conservation restrictions.
So it is not in perpetuity, but every so often it needs to be re-registered in order to be, continue to be in effect?
Correct. But our, our ability in the special condition, and that's a good point, in the special condition, that condition to enforce any violations or failure to record or re-record a deed restriction is in perpetuity.
Thank you so much. That helps me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Eleanor, anybody from the public?
Is it possible, I, I, it sounds like there were, I don't think I've seen this language. I don't know if there were last-minute changes. I saw it a couple hours ago, but for the deed restriction, I'm very happy to have the conservation restriction language, but
I'm sorry, are you, are you talking about the order of conditions or the actual deed restriction?
No, the order of conditions, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. So Eleanor, I think you have that in the Google file.
Is it short enough to just read so people understand what we're doing? I think that could
No, it is not. You, I think I would lose people.
Okay.
So I wonder if, just hold on a sec. I wonder if Eleanor or DeeDee could share it? Just could take a look at it.
Sorry, to, to share screen with the new language?
Yep.
Let me
I don't think I have that ability. If I do, I'm more than happy to do it.
DeeDee, I'm going to share my screen briefly.
Sounds good.
Oh, and this is where I find out I have too many tabs open. Here we go.
That's why I didn't want to share it.
Okay. I saw you didn't want to read it.
Yeah, it would be confusing.
So this should be, and then this was as revised on, I believe it was, Jim, did you say, my apologies, September 17th, 2024?
Yes, as we're, yep, that's it a lot.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry to slow us down, but it just I think it's helpful to to get to see.
Eleanor, do I have access to revise this while we're
Sorry, I will see.
Let me go into the file.
Do this, is this?
Or while Commissioner Herbst is reading that, if you could go down to 1, 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, seven lines down, seven lines up from the bottom? And you see despite, I'm sorry, it's in Condition 119, when you see despite the applicant's good faith efforts, can you put and diligent? And we've got reference to the plan.
Thank, thank you for
Makes sense?
For doing this, yep.
Okay, good. Thank you, Eleanor. Okay, comments from the public. I see Chip, you have your
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to allow you to listen to Chip. He's got some comments.
Good, good evening. First, I'd like to say that
Uh, good, good evening, um, first, I'd like to say that I agree with the descriptions of the restriction and the deed restriction that the. That the chairman has offered, second, yeah, we're we're uh supporting the language that you have that gives us as. The conservation restriction as a uh first resort and the deed restriction as a backup. Um, I just want to explain what the process is in terms of what how the language works. What happens is when we have a deed, a conservation restriction, we first send it to the state for a preliminary review, so I've been. That's included as a draft that goes to the state first before any activity, so that you know that that's taking place. And then what we have is that before there's a sale of a unit or construction. We have to have completed the C R process, and the reason for that is you want to have that recorded against title. And if you had a pre-sale of a unit, you know, it's could be arguable that that wouldn't apply to you, so we want to make sure that before. Anything uh is uh construction starts, which we think would be, you know, next spring. Or a sale, whichever comes first, that would have to be um recorded in that. And then the third thing is, you'll note, we made it clear that the Conservation Commission is a is the grantee, so. Not only do you have enforcement authority in the uh order, but as the grantee with a conservation restriction, you will have. Primary en enforcement, so I just wanted to explain to the commission the way that the process works. After the state looks at it the first time, they send it back to us. Because it has to be executed by the Conservation Commission, the City Council, and the mayor. In order to meet the requirements for it to be in perpetuity. Um, and so in in order for that to work, everybody has to execute that, and that's required to be before. Uh, as I said, this a sale of a of a unit takes place, so uh we're pleased that that worked out i if. By some some work that the uh the the state's not interested and doesn't uh. Allow it, then we'll go to the 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 backup, which is the deed restriction.
Great, thank you, okay, Paul, okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, could I just go back to the conditions uh very briefly, uh, there was a couple more that I don't think we've hit. Uh, that I forwarded to Alana at the last moment. Um, number forty one, uh, last sentence, at the request of the applicant, uh, commission staff may authorize construction lay down areas. Um, within the buffer zone, could we change that to outside the riverfront area? It's just that um, you know, during the construction period, it's there's going to be a lot of activity, we've we've actually set the limits as shown on the plans. And we'd, I mean, or we could just simply say as as shown uh on the limit of the work of the approved plans, something to that effect.
Jim, my apologies, I think my earlier comment, um, I meant that the rest of your comments, I think, looked fine, um, just with the exception of. It was um, condition number seventy seven, where it says regulated under the act, I think we would prefer to see regulated under the act and ordinance. But I believe the rest of them were fine for staff and Chair Parker, were they um, okay for you as well?
All right. Yep, I'm sorry, but as to seventy seven, Alana, the reason why we said that was that because. Um, the resource areas uh under the Boston ordinance are a little bit more expansive than the act. And we just wanted the ability to to uh conduct the plantings and the mowing over uh on the southerly side of the property where the restricted area is going to be. So that's why we we just simply limited it to the act, we just want to be able to cross over that area during construction only. Uh, just to simply uh, um, you know, um, plant those uh plantings and. And and then, um, you know, make sure that everything's stable uh during and at at the end of the construction phase.
Right, I think that um because it's as described in the notice of intent and approved by this order, um, we'd be under the assumption that that the work that's being permitted. By this order of conditions and any um required vehicles under this order of conditions are permitted, but just no additional vehicles. Would be permitted in any of the areas um under the act or ordinance.
Okay, and then and then the last thing was that there's an existing patio that's in the riverfront area. And um Katia, uh, you might want to correct me, but are are we just going to simply um. Um, improve that and just we're leaving it the way it is, but we we may need to simply re-point it or or just clean it up. And we just want to make sure that that's allowed as well.
Yeah, there's a pre-existing patio very close to. The riverfront, it within the riverfront area that we're proposing to keep in place. Um, and not disturb, and we're also proposing near the oval lawn that's outside of the twenty five foot over on the south side of the site. A small bluestone patio adjacent to and part of right next to that lawn area, so to be be able to bring the bluestone over. Usually like a a small tract, maybe a forklift or something like that, and attract. Uh, equipment would roll over once to be able to drop it off, otherwise lunging it over by hand is pretty difficult.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Herbst, um, I'll go to you, is that your understanding of the patio situation?
Well, my definitely my understanding on the on the existing one is that they had made a point of saying they were not going to disturb it, so.
Right.
That that sounds like they've reiterated that now, I do think that's important, that was part of that argument about why it's staying, is it would be better not to disturb.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, okay, Paul.
Yes, um, Paulson with the Boston Urban Wiles program, I just wanted to say that I'm glad to see that. Uh, a condition has been included regarding the conservation restriction, we really do think that this is uh, this is critical. To the long-term success of the project and the whole watershed in this area. And a deed restriction, you know, on paper might look good, but in practice, we know that it will really really come up short. Um, we think that the this project would be very favorably looked at by the state. Uh, I pointed out a couple examples of uh restrictions that they've uh approved on properties that are. Perhaps not as significant, uh, so we're so we're we're glad, we're confident about that. Um, I just wanted to ask if there's any timeframe uh surrounding those good faith and diligent efforts. To develop a a conservation restriction, I know there was a timeline for Sophia Snow Place. In putting that gave the applicant enough time to put together a draft. Uh, so I wanted to see if there was something similar for this project.
Yeah, um, it's an interesting question, I was sort of tying the timeline to um. Uh, to the um sale of the units, um, what was the language we had in there? Occupancy or something like that, Chip, did you want to?
Prior to construction or the sale of the unit, uh, only because with condos, sometimes you have a pre-sale. So clearly you do have a a restriction, because we can't uh go start construction before we've uh. We've we've done that, and we also have a draft that goes, I think, before the pre um. Pre-construction conference, and we have to show you that we have a draft, so yeah, it it's it's an institutional check, as you've stated. Mister Chairman here, because we can't go forward and do the work unless unless we've given the draft. And we can't sell a unit unless we have it finalized.
Okay, does that answer your question, Paul?
Yes, thanks.
Great, thank you, okay, um. Mister Schuman? Mister Schuman had his hand up. I don't see him anymore.
I can ask to unmute, um.
Okay.
No, I can ask to unmute if that is.
Oh, there he is. Hey, Mister Schuman, if you um can't unmute, you can type in the chat to get your testimony.
Oh, no, I'm okay, I must.
Okay.
Hit the button.
Fantastic. You're muted again.
Yeah, I don't need to say anything, I I didn't intend to raise my hand, sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you, sorry about that, um, okay, so I think that's it, so um. With that, I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions as amended this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote I, okay, um, thank you to everyone involved, Paul, uh, people from S T V, project team. Uh, certainly, uh, very challenging exercise, I think we all learned a lot, and um, we have a much better project going forward, so good luck with everything, and thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you, everyone.
Very much.
Fantastic, okay, uh, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six twenty ten and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash. Zero three two from Hancock Associates on behalf of Canterbury Partners LLC. For the proposed demolition of an existing single-family house and car garage, car repair, storage lot. And the construction of fourteen unit townhouse development located at six oh two Canterbury Street in Roselandale. Um, uh, resource areas are twenty five foot uh riverfront area, twenty five foot waterfront area, and one hundred foot buffer to inland bank. Uh, this was continued from our September eighteenth, twenty twenty four hearing, I think, Elena, one of the issues was we didn't have a um. D E P file number, okay.
Uh, and now that's been issued.
Okay, and I um think we might have had another question or two, so who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, um, Anthony Donato from Hancock Associates.
Great, okay, um, so Elena, what was left over, I know we we talked about a chain link fence. Um, or I prefer to call it a litter fence or something like that, um, what what else do we have here besides the file number issue?
Yes, so we have a number of conditions that staff would recommend, which we have also shared with the proponent and. Um, our understanding is that they would be comfortable with these additions, so we would recommend a condition specifying a timeline for the restoration work. To ensure that it occurs in a timely manner, a condition requiring notice to be given to new residents about the restoration work when it's in progress. Um, a condition requiring monitoring reports after the restoration work is completed, ideally for three years. And a condition um requiring a submission of the wetland professionals qualifications to staff and sign off. Uh, given the sensitive nature of the site, we would also um recommend including that fence uh between where the top of bank is. And where the sidewalk and that American Legion Highway run, uh, similar to the other properties that are along American Legion Highway. Um, and then there was language from the original order of conditions which was issued, um, which we would also recommend including. Um, related to the uh, the language, and I believe that I rather than reading that whole um paragraph aloud, I believe that. It's in um staff comments for the commissioners to review, um, so those would be the the sort of. Outstanding recommendations that we have for the site.
Okay, and so those, uh, all the uh, uh, aforesaid mentioned, um, were um. Exchanged with uh Anthony and they've agreed to those conditions?
Uh, yes, yes, we have, um, and the only comment I had, Elena, and I don't know if you saw that late in the email, was that there was some conservation restrictions. At the end of the draft order that I don't think applied to the site, um.
Right, we can, um, yeah, so we can remove that as well from the draft order.
Okay, and then I think the only thing I I had submitted, I think we're going to add a fence on both both sides of the property to the top of the bank, and then. Yeah, sure, we we can add the black vinyl at the at the other end of the site.
And I wanted to clarify, so um, the uh, the fences that you have proposed at the moment, those are fences that will be. Uh, along the property lines between six oh two Canterbury and the um, the parcels on either side, right? So the you haven't, uh, my understanding was that the project isn't uh proposing a fence along uh American Legion Highway at this point.
They were, they were not, but um, you know, if it's if it's a condition, they'll, yeah, they'll they'll help us do it. There there's a, I was looking at street view, there's a, it looks like there's something. That's uh like a dilapidated, like maybe railing, but it it it's probably not on their property, it's probably within the right of way, but. Um, it's probably on the city of Boston's property, but. I don't know if they'd have to leave it there, or they could remove it and put a new black vinyl, which. Which probably makes sense, because I think that's what they did down the street, right?
Yeah, and um, we can also, Chair Parker, if if uh this works for the commission, we can include a condition that is. Um, sort of a staff approval of the of the fence and any, you know, work that needs to be taken into account. Um, related to the either fence or guard rail that's there.
Okay, and I think that I thought the fence was going to be like a black vinyl, what you said, eight inches, um.
Like a black chain link fence, um, I I I think that a good reference point is um, the project that's at the corner of American Legion Highway. And Walk Hill, um, because they have, they have a similar fence for similar purposes. So now, the fence wouldn't be eight inches tall, I I believe that what we discussed was having eight inches at the bottom of.
Black vinyl chain link fence, eight inch gap at the bottom, correct?
Great, yeah.
Okay, fantastic, uh, and Ellen, I think that's a good suggestion, you can work with Anthony on the um. Uh, on the fence issue, um, just want to remind members of the public, if you want to provide comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six, unmute yourself. Or send your questions to staff via email at C C at boston.gov, uh, Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything on this?
Uh, no, I do not.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon?
I have nothing either.
Commissioner Herbst?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay, okay, Elena, any raised hands?
I do not see any raised hands, um, but Chair Parker, can I uh make a correction or uh include something that I forgot to include in the last hearing? Just as part of public record?
Sure.
Um, so apologies for not mentioning this, so for ninety Allendale, the first project, we had also received public comment letters, which are publicly accessible. Linked in the public notice as well as in the drive for the commission's review from Frank O'Brien and Paul Sutton.
Okay, thank you.
But no raised hands for this and no emails in the inbox.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions as amended uh by staff.
So moved.
See if a second, thank you, Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Um, Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote I, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six two thousand eight and Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero three zero. From Green International Affiliates Inc. on behalf of P and G, the Gillette Company. For the proposed construction of a new concrete nitrogen tank pad and twenty two bollards to support. The installation of a new nine thousand gallon nitrogen tank located at twenty Gillette Park, South Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hello, uh, Akshana Fartushna from Green International is here on behalf of uh the P and G, the Gillette Company, as well as the. Um, Ketaki Shashank from the Gillette Company as well.
Great, okay, the floor is all yours, what are you doing over there?
Okay, so uh, we do have this slide, I believe, that we provided for this presentation, if you could please share the um. Um, locust plan, which is the slide two. So that you can start to introduce the project to you, and then I'll take over to go over our impacts.
Hi, hello, uh, my name is Kethi Shashank, I'm a project manager in the Boston Plant at P and G Gillette. Um, and I'm the project manager for this particular one where we are installing. Uh, a new concrete pad in the location that's indicated here, um, and on top of which, there will be a new nitrogen pad. A liquid nitrogen tank, sorry, installed uh by Messer, the nitrogen supplier that we have for our site. Um, in addition to that, we'll be installing new piping that will tie into our existing supply lines. Um, the nitrogen is used as part of our blade process.
Okay, do you want me to start going over everything else right now, or did you want to uh us to share the plan, which is the last slide? Or this is basically it, and I can take over?
You can take over.
Okay, sounds good, I'm not sure if um, my video is working, can you see me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I don't see myself, all right, so um, you can turn on to the next slide. Yes, so this is our resource areas present on site for this project. As you can tell, uh, the project is located um in the vicinity of the Fort Point Channel in the city of Boston, and um. All of our impacts are limited to this small area outlined on this uh figure, and. The impacts are limited to just land subject to coastal storm flowage, um, you can even tell that there is uh no buffer zones. Pretty much no waterfront area, it's. It's strictly land subject to coastal storm flowage, which you can see on the next slide. If you can please turn on, yes. Um, so the entire area is currently a developed parking lot. There is no vegetation. Um, there is uh, just the commercial building and nothing else. Um, as part of this project, we're just installing the uh, nitrogen tank pad and we are not changing the drainage patterns, we're not changing the land cover, everything will remain the same. Um, the site will be stabilized as soon as the the work is completed and um, that's pretty much it. I can answer any question that you may have, but it's a very straightforward and simple project. You can see the picture here of the area where this is going to happen.
Okay, um, Eleanor, what do you, what do you have on this?
Uh, we don't have anything to add on this. Uh, we had just noted that we had conducted a site visit last week and um, yeah, and uh, I believe that conditions are also ready to go.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. What um, are the risks of placing a nitrogen tank? I assume it's liquefied nitrogen that's stored in here? That will be stored in here?
Yes.
What are the risks associated with um, having a liquefied nitrogen tank? If there is any breakage, leakage? What, whatever to happen, given that there is uh, there's the Fort Point Channel nearby?
I, I think what he's asking for is your spill containment measures.
Um, I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Yeah, I think um, what he's asking is what are your spill containment methods in the event of a breach of the tank?
Pill containment methods.
Yeah, so in other words, like, is it autoclave that there, you know, a few barriers? So if the interior barrier breaks, there's another barrier there, you know, like maybe three different layers, um, and as far as escaping to the ground, um, can anything escape to the ground, or is there gas that would be emitted to the atmosphere, that sort of thing? Commissioner Condon, did I get that?
Uh, thank you for restating that question. Yes, that, that is part of what I'm asking, but I, I was hoping that we would lead to the containment methods from learning what the risks are. Uh, but it, it's fine to talk about the containment methods if uh, the proponent is able to talk about.
Uh, I guess I'm not able to talk about the containment methods because I'm not sure exactly the um, engineering part of how the nitrogen tanks are working. Because the permitting for this project right now is limited to the installation of the tank pad to install that nitrogen tank on top of this, and what happens in the resource area subject to water Wetlands Protection Act and Boston ordinance is actually the installation of the tank pad that will support this nitrogen tank. Uh, I'm not sure if KTK has any um, other details.
Can I add, I would have to refer back to our spill protection plan or spill containment plan that it has been established for our site through our environmental program. In terms of the risks of the nitrogen itself, we have conducted process safety studies for the new installation uh, and have implemented the countermeasures to prevent any uh, process safety incidents which would include spills and release to environment.
And would it just be liquid and there's no gas, right? It's really liquefied nitrogen?
The tank is liquid nitrogen, yes.
Good. Yeah, I'm not sure what, when is the appropriate time to learn more about this, uh, Chair Parker, but I was curious about it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so um, uh, yeah, uh, thank you. You um, uh, reminded me of the question I had. So um, once the pad is down and you're installing the tank, um, are you saying, I, I mean, um, Eleanor, maybe you can help me on this. Um, wouldn't that require another NOI or?
So for the installation of the tank, um, are, and I guess, yeah, this was an assumption that staff had made, but we were assuming that it was, it was going to be basically just set on top of the the pad, not, like, there's no other installation required?
I see.
Yeah, right.
No more excavation uh, after the tank.
Okay. Okay, understood.
And also, apologies just to also flag that um, part of our set of conditions uh, includes a few different conditions related to spill management plans. So um, commission staff will be uh, looking for the prior to construction item which specifies their spill management plan and um, what would be done on site in that case.
Okay, so let's make sure that those conditions specify for the um, nitrogen, nitrogen tank that will be uh, fitted to the site later.
We'll add that, thank you.
Yeah, as opposed, it could be construed as just the hydraulics for the machinery that um, is working on the excavation, but I think we'd want to know, we'd want to know something about the tank and its protections. Okay. Com- Commissioner Herbst?
I guess I'm still a little, I had had the same question about whether the tank wouldn't require, uh, I mean, I assume it's gonna be fixed to it. Are you thinking it doesn't require a permit because they're going to ten? They're going now, the pad will be above base flood?
Yes, the pad will be installed already, so the tank goes on top of that and then um, the connection of the tank to the existing building will be above the ground, so it won't require an installation that will be uh, excavation, I guess, yeah.
And the pad itself, the top of the pad is above base flood, I think I saw. Um, does seem a little I don't know.
Yes. Uh, the pad is going to be installed basically um, below ground and um, it will be altering a little bit of a, you know, land subject to coastal storm flowage, and it's only going to result in approximately three hundred eighty-five cubic feet of pill, which is very minor.
Understood, understood.
Also, yes, and overall area of the pad is only um, um, basically thirty point five feet by twenty-one feet.
I understand. Eleanor, is that, you're thinking that it, the the pad itself is gonna be above base flood, so that the tank itself is sort of beyond our?
Or our sense was that because the tank was just being sort of, I guess, placed on the ground rather than going into the ground in any capacity, since it was just being placed on the tank, but I may have misinterpreted that. Okay, well, I, I guess I don't have any more questions.
Yeah. I mean, I think as long as we get the information about the tank and the fail, um, that would be helpful. It sounds like there is non-invasive work happening after.
Yes, and I can also uh, just repeat that, and it's in the NOI as well, that the uh, location of the pad is basically nine point, elevation nine point four, and the proposed elevation of the top of the pad is ten point seven three, which is a little bit uh, less than a foot and a half, and this is basically the impact within the uh, land subject to coastal storm flowage. And so when the um, tank is installed, it will be installed on top of the top of the pad, which is going to be ten point seven three elevation, and the existing flood plan elevation is uh, ten feet.
Yep, thank you.
Chair Parker, it's a quick comment here, if I may.
Sure.
So what is physically, geographically, in the jurisdiction is one question, of course, and that's a valid one. But also if something is outside of that space and above base flood elevation, but potentially can impact, have impact on resource area. And then that should be in the scope for discussion. So I'm glad we're including the tank considerations in, in here, given that it sounds like it won't be a separate NOI.
Right, yeah, exactly. Um, and um, uh, the spill prevention plan um, is a requirement with the order conditions uh, that we're issuing, so. So good. Okay, well, I'm glad we had this discussion. Um, Eleanor, I don't see any hands up. Do you?
I don't see any hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion um, to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions with um, Eleanor, I don't know if all those amendments um, that we talked about, or all of those conditions that we talked about are already in the order of condition, uh, order of conditions uh, or not, or should I uh, note that uh, there are going to be amendments to the order of conditions?
There will be some amendments. Um, okay, I, I think that's, yeah, that's safe.
Okay, and issue the order of conditions as amended by staff.
Okay, so, so.
Thank you very much, Commissioners and Chair.
We're not done. We have to vote. Don't go anywhere. This is the big moment of drama right here. Um, Commissioner Herbst, what did you um?
I, I moved the motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You're kidding like Commissioner Sullivan? Have to pry it out of you. Um, Commissioner Wilson?
I'll vote I.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote I. That carries for nothing. Okay, you're free to go now. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, everyone. A good night.
Okay, take care. Okay, um, there have been a number of continuances, actually only two. Uh, continued our notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine six one in Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero five one and DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine six in Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero two one. Uh, we'll now begin our regular meeting. Uh, first item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven four in Boston file number twenty twenty one dash um, zero one two for the demolition of a residential building and construction of a new multi-family residential building located at eight thirty-nine Saratoga Street in East Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Eleanor, any good news?
Staff has not received any updates and therefore recommends that the commission hold off on a vote.
Okay, we'll move on. Request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine zero in Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one five from Fort Point Associates on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the repairs associated with the emergency certification for a sinkhole located at two five six Marginal Street in East Boston resource areas or land subject to coastal storm flowage and one hundred foot buffer to coastal bank. What do we have on this?
Staff conducted a site visit on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Um, so again, the work that was completed was the repaving of the sinkhole. And uh, we just wanted to note that the uh, the paving over this area was a little bit uneven and it was thicker than other patched areas on the site. Um, there's a little bit of cracking that was already starting to happen at the higher points, um, but the uh, I mean, the applicant did also note this, so that they were aware of it as well. Um, that being said, we would still recommend issuing the uh, certificate of compliance for this work.
Okay.
And there are also photos in the drive folder for the commission to review.
Okay, any questions for Eleanor? Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine zero in Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one five.
So moved.
Give a second.
I, I had a question, but I wasn't quick enough.
Oh, go ahead, please.
On the pavement pictures, it, it looks like, I can't tell if it's a crack or it was something placed on the pavement while it was still being paved? Do you know what I'm talking about?
We, yeah, so that's, we, we're not sure what caused that specifically. I mean, wha- I'll also note that um, they had placed the sort of um, the planters there to prevent any vehicles that are basically bigger than, they said anything bigger than a golf cart, um, can't get through there. So I think that um, they're intending that area to only be, you know, used by other golf carts and smaller vehicles, um, or, you know, pedestrians. But um, I, I think that, yeah, I guess just something to, to keep in mind for the site is, is maybe, you know, we can specify in the future what it is that we're looking for from the, the repaving.
So you're, it sounds like you're reasonably satisfied.
Yes, I, I, I think that this may be um, taught staff that we should be more specific in our conditions perhaps in what, what it is that we're looking for in a, in an area being repaved.
Thank you. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote I. Next item is a request for a cer- certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one four 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 from Epsilon Associates on behalf of Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority for the Alfred Street Bus Garage interim repairs to the sheet pile wall located at eighty Alfred Street in the great neighborhood of Charlestown. Uh, resource areas, riverfront area, coastal bank and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Eleanor, what do we have on that?
Similarly, staff conducted a site visit on September twenty sixth. Um, the photos for both um, this site visit as well as for the next item on the agenda, which is zero zero six fifteen oh one are in the same folder as they are, um, they're the same site visit functionally. Um, but yeah, so uh, everything seemed um, to be done satisfactorily and, and staff would recommend issuing a COC for, for this work.
Okay, any questions for Eleanor? Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one four four four.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote I. That carries for nothing. Okay, uh, next item is request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one five zero one from Epsilon Associates on behalf of the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority for the shoreline stabilization and yard improvements located at eighty Alfred Street in Charlestown. Uh, resource areas, land under ocean, coastal beaches, coastal banks, fish runs and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Uh, similarly, we conducted a site visit on September twenty sixth. Again, the photos are in the same shared folder as for zero zero six one four four four, and staff would recommend issuing a certificate of compliance for the completed work.
Okay, any questions for Eleanor? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to issue a cer- issue a certificate of compliance for the EP file number zero zero six one five zero one.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote I. That carries for nothing. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, administrative updates. I hear we have a special guest talking about uh, our third phase of regulations.
We do. We have Alice Brown from the Environment Department.
Fantastic. Welcome, Alice. What good news do you have for us?
Thank you. I'm unable to turn my cam, oh.
Your camera's on.
Great, um, it's just frozen on my computer. Um, hi, everyone. I'm Alice Brown, Director of Environmental Quality for the City of Boston, and I wanted to update the commission on the status of the Phase Three regulations. As of Monday, we have a request for proposals available for uh, proponents interested in assisting the Conservation Commission with drafting and finalizing the draft for the remaining climate regulations and environmental justice regulations. Um, and when my computer is working slightly better, I will put a link in the chat for anyone who is interested.
Okay, fantastic. Um, Alice, um, what are you expecting as far as responses? If any, at this point?
Yeah, we're hoping to find a firm that is, um, first of all, has some ideas about reaching new populations and addressing environmental justice or injustices in the past. Um, we are primarily looking for folks who have community outreach and engagement expertise, as well as meeting coordination and strategic planning skills. Um, we believe that between previously drafted regulations um, and a certain amount of in-house counsel available to us, that we um, have the legal pieces that we need to continue the work or finalize the work, um, what we really want is to get um, more different voices and ensure that we're thinking strategically about um, the environmental justice component, as well as the sort of long-term implications for some of the climate uh, needs as we coordinate across many city departments with the new resilience office.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Wilson, any questions for Alice?
Uh, thanks for the update.
Great. Um, Commissioner Condon?
Really excited to see this movement. Thank you, Alice.
Commissioner Herbst?
Alice, I'm wondering how you're thinking about commissioners' roles in this. We were um, very much not involved in all the first round of, of drafts and that felt like a hard way to have sort of complete um, language at the end. Uh, it was, I, I thought it made it more difficult to respond without having any idea what was considered or, or those kinds of things. So I'm just wondering how you're, if you've thought about that or how you're thinking about it. What was considered or, or those kinds of things, so I'm just wondering how you're, if you've thought about that or how you're thinking about it.
Yeah, there will be several opportunities in which members of the public can participate, and I think all commissioners are welcome and encouraged to. Participate as members of the public without having any open meeting law conflict. Um, and then there may be specific commissioners with specific types of professional expertise who will be invited to join. Stakeholder meetings that are relevant to those areas that make sense.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alice, thank you very much, exciting, uh, lots of work, so, good luck. Okay, uh, Eleanor, any other administrative updates?
Uh, yes, we also wanted to share that we had received, well, the commission had received a letter of support for their decision to um. Issue a negative determination of applicability for the Tree E C project at Constitution Beach from State Representative Adrian Madaro, and that is in the. Google Drive folder for the commission's review.
I'm sorry, we issued that though, right?
It's not. Yes, a letter, a letter of support for that decision specifically.
For the decision itself, um, that is a first, so I'm sorry that took me by surprise, okay. Well, thank the rep for us, we really appreciate that, um, okay. Um, last item on the agenda is acceptance of meeting minutes from July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, um, and August twenty first, twenty twenty four. Um, they've both been vetted by um, um, Commissioner Herbst and myself, um. Are there any questions on those? No, okay, so to entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from July twenty fourth and um, twenty twenty four and August twenty first, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
We have a second.
Good.
Fantastic, uh, Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote I, that carries for nothing, okay, thank you very much, I think we're just left to a motion uh, to adjourn by acclamation. And again, thanks for all the work on Allendale, that was, um, feels good to get that off our plate, a lot of work went into that, so appreciate everybody's um. Uh, efforts, that was, that was a big one, um, okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate that, um, so, good night, see everybody in two weeks?
Good night.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.